We will have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I am the lead witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started, our thoughts and prayers are with the Rock County Football Family, the community, and we're really sorry that thoughts and prayers were with them at this time. We call the meeting to order. All three commissioners are here. We will now have consents and approvals. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There are new exemptions this week. General County vouchers, or vouchers, General County, one hundred three thousand two hundred three dollars and ten cents. Nine one one cash seventeen thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and twelve cents. Chestnut Ridge Park four thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Mason Dixon Park six hundred. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, twenty-seven thousand seventy-three dollars and five cents. Cole Severance, fifty-seven dollars thirty cents. Nine one one, ten thousand eighty dollars thirty-six cents. Chestnut Ridge Park, six hundred thirty-two dollars sixty cents. Camp Muffley, one thousand sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Mason Dixon Park, five hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents for a voucher total of one hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred forty dollars and thirty-six cents. We have budget revisions for state approval for the general fund, the county commission, county clerk's elections, and in-house general fund. We have the parks, position vacancies for boards and authorities. We have the Board of Zoning Appeals, Plan Commission, Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandoned Elaborated Enforcement Agency. We also have fiduciary orders for September eighteenth. And we have also another item for fiduciary hearing and also two letters regarding an estate.
Okay, so let's deal with everything except for the two letters.
And the estate, yes.
Okay, I move to approve.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay, let's go on.
If you want to address each of the letters.
Yes.
Okay. The first letter is from Ray Jaikle regarding the Shirley Godfrey Estate. He's representing Tanya Baird, one of the heirs to the estate, and he is wanting a fiduciary commissioner.
Okay, so we had taken this up in commission a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
And had moved to approve a fiduciary commissioner. And that's my understanding that one has been approved. Mr. Jaikle just may not have been aware of it.
No, well, they've all three been approved.
I mean, been appointed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they got appointed and only one has taken their oath. And we, he just did that last week. So it is scheduled after the meeting today that we're appointing him to this matter.
To this matter. Okay.
And the second letter is from George Armistead, also regarding the Godfrey Estate, so.
Basically, it states that it will come to a resolution between he and Mr. Jaikle. So it appears that the fiduciary commissioner may not be necessary in this case from what I read that the, that Mr. Armistead has presented here.
Well, it was, the commission had already voted to approve a fiduciary commissioner a couple of weeks ago, so I assume we just should let that run its course.
Any recommendations?
That would be my recommendation.
Well, I've not seen these letters, so.
I can get them to you.
Yeah, we need to get those for our file and then.
This just arrived.
Yeah, this just arrived this morning.
Oh, I was gonna say, I wasn't aware of a second letter.
George Armistead. Okay, so we officially requested a fiduciary agent. So since that's probably in the works, how about we continue that process, but could you just talk to the two lawyers to see if that's still gonna be needed or not? Because if we could, we'd hold off one week to do it, then maybe then we would have. It's the last two paragraphs. It appears that they now might resolve, but we've already set it in motion. So let's just not, how about we don't do anything and we ask you to intercede for us to see which is the best direction to go. Is that comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for doing that, Carrie. Okay, now that we have another.
Yes, set a hearing date for the Arthur P. Scotts estate.
And that date is?
November seventh at ten thirty.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The seventh at ten thirty?
The seventh.
Yeah, November seventh, so Thursday. Bring a lot of coffee. Okay, anything else? Okay, introduction of new employees, personnel changes. First, we have Carrie Blaney and introducing Christopher Cole Dorsey. Come on down.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'd like to introduce to you Chris Dorsey, who is a new full-time employee with the county clerk's office. Chris has a degree in history from Marshall University. He's gonna be working in our records management department. He started on Monday, so he will be.
Move for approval.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Chris. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here from your services center? Okay, come on down. First, we have William Smith, relief worker, part-time, and Jamie Davis, relief worker, part-time. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept?
Yeah, move to approve.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have, just so, we just wanna transfer from part-time to full-time. I just wanna make sure I'm correct. Here we go. Rachel Arbogast and Rhonda, okay, I'm gonna ruin this. Badalasham Walimu, okay? That's close enough.
We apologize.
We apologize for destroying that last name. You can tell me later. I mean, she's laughing. Are you here? Could you tell me, could you say, come up and just say the correct name so I don't do it wrong?
No, that's not her.
Oh, that's not her. Oh, okay. Everyone's just laughing. Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, ruin that. How about Perry to Christopher. Transfer, part-time, victim's witness program employee to full-time. I hope your name's a lot easier than that.
Much easier. Ms. Edwards.
Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Ms. Edwards has been a part-time employee in our victim advocates office for a bit now. Even though she's really worked on some difficult cases recently, she still has agreed to come on full-time as our grant, one of our grant positions in that office. And so we are here asking to modify her employment from part-time to full-time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Edwards.
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will have comments from the public. If anyone would like to come down and speak, you can state your name, your address, and you have four minutes. Come on down. Great, we're excited.
Thank you.
Hi, how you doing today?
Greetings. I've been here before. My name is Dwayne Nichols. I live at three three zero Dreamcatcher Circle, Morgantown, near the winery out in Stewart, off of Stewartstown Road.
Okay.
We have two coal-fired power plants within view of our community, and the prevailing winds come that direction. So we're already inundated with steam plumes, with carbon dioxide, and with other emissions. It's been proposed that additional power plants be put in our region. And there's concern for that primarily because we live in a new era. Today is unlike any time in the history of mankind. I feel that's because at sixty, I'm sorry, I'm eighty-two years old and maybe the oldest person in the room. And I've had a chance in my professional career to work on coal research, natural gas research, environmental problems. As a chemical engineer, I understand what Joseph Fourier understood back in eighteen twenty-four when he realized the greenhouse effect. And we all know what the greenhouses are. Al Gore, twenty, effectively twenty years ago, realized that this was a national problem. And he brought it pretty much more out into the open than anybody has for a long time. But the point is, carbon dioxide's still increasing. Methane is even going up even faster. And yet, whenever wells are drilled, there's leakage. Whenever compressors work, there's off gases. Whenever gas is combusted, there's still residual pollution comes from it because it's not a hundred percent complete combustion. So I think the kids of the world are realizing, when they called for the global climate strike, that there is a new era. Things aren't like they were before. And I believe that we're not isolated from the rest of the universe. We're part of it. So what I'm supposed to do here is say, I'm gonna try, if my health permits, to be down in front of this building this Friday at noon with a sign that says that I'm concerned. And I don't know if this commission is concerned. I know that the Morgantown City Council has gone on record to express their concern. With regards, I'm wondering if we couldn't have a public meeting on the proposed Longview operation. I think that would be appropriate. When Longview first came in, we had a public meeting in this building before we had a pilot agreement. I'm here to request a report on what's the status of the pilot agreement. I'm here to say that there is a knowledge nowadays that this is a new time and that the decisions, processes, decisions we've made before are not appropriate to be made in the same way that we did before. I'm not here to be critical. I'm here to be helpful. I'm a citizen longstanding, a member of the Monongahela Historical Society, a leader in the Monongahela area watershed compact, and an organizer of the Clean Air Coalition. So these are terribly important issues, and I invite, request your help, cooperation, and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern, Mr. Nichols. We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. We now have a proclamation, National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We have a proclamation, and the individuals, please come down and who would like to be there. And if you wanna state your name and who is with you, or you can do that afterwards, whichever you'd like. Why don't you state who you are first?
Hi, my name is Tori Ann Grail. I'm currently Miss West Virginia, and my platform for Miss America is childhood cancer.
Great.
I'm Tiffany Battin, and I have the pleasure of being a mom to a childhood cancer survivor, ten years cancer-free.
Wow, congratulations.
I was diagnosed with cancer.
And we're glad you're here. Very glad you're here. Aye.
Hi. Hello, my name is Andrea Stevens, and this is my son Benjamin Stevens.
Aye, Ben.
He was diagnosed with neuroblastoma this April at Ruby Memorial Hospital, which is a neuroendocrine system cancer, very rare. And he is doing amazingly well. But I also have the privilege of being a mom of a childhood cancer survivor and current warrior in our county.
My name is Michelle Kuhn. My son Johnny Kuhn was diagnosed with cancer in January of two thousand. He passed away in March of two thousand five of brain cancer.
My name is Dr. Patrick Tomback. I'm one of the pediatric cancer doctors at WVU Children's Hospital that we're building. And I'm very lucky to be able to do this, and I appreciate you guys listening because this is an amazing thing. And everyone who does this is just super helpful, helping us fight this terrible disease and all of them, so thank you so much.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. I'm Anita Graham. I'm a pediatric hematology oncology social worker at the Children's Hospital here, and I work with the families that we serve every day, so thank you.
Thank you. Do you'd like to read the proclamation, Tori Ann?
Whereas in two thousand nineteen, childhood cancer remains the number-one disease-related killer of our nation's children. And each year, cancer kills more children than asthma, juvenile diabetes, cystic fibrosis, and pediatric AIDS combined. And whereas nationally, forty-three children between birth and the age of twenty will be diagnosed with cancer every day, totaling more than fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty children per year. And in West Virginia, there are more than seventy-five children diagnosed annually, children treated at the WVU Medicine Children's Hospital in Morgantown, Edwards Comprehensive Cancer Center at Hoops Children's Hospital, Cabell Huntington Hospital in Huntington, and C.A.M.C. Children's Cancer Center with physician services provided by WVU Physicians of Charleston. And whereas even though the childhood cancer community is making remarkable breakthroughs in cancer treatments and improving survival rates, one out of eight, one out of every eight children nationwide continue to die daily as a result of childhood cancer. On average, there are seventy-one potential life years lost when a child dies of cancer. And whereas childhood cancer occurs regularly, randomly, and spares no ethnic group, socioeconomic class, or geographic region. Nationally, the incidence of cancer among adolescents and young adults is increasing at a greater rate than any other age group except those over sixty-five years. And whereas a childhood cancer diagnosis is a family diagnosis and is a tremendous emotional and financial burden for the family and child to bear, the average cost of a stay in a hospital for a child with cancer is forty thousand dollars per stay. On average, cancer costs almost five times as much as hospitalizations for other pediatric conditions. And whereas since nineteen eighty, only four cancer medications have been specifically developed for children, less than four percent of federal government's total funding for cancer research is dedicated to childhood cancers each year. And whereas, National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month recognizes the courage and compassion of those children and their families throughout West Virginia and the nation who have, are currently battling, childhood cancer. And whereas, all children affected by cancer, their families, medical professionals, caregivers, and friends join West Virginia Kids Cancer Crusaders, Inc., to continue the collaborative efforts of a support network, raise awareness and funds for those affected by childhood cancer, and make a positive difference for patients, families, and survivors in the future. Now, therefore, we, the members of the County Commission of Monongahela County, West Virginia, do hereby declare September two thousand nineteen as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the Mountain State and encourage all citizens to join us in this observance.
Thank you. Move for approval.
Second.
Both are moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We want to thank you all for being here. And wanna thank the doctors who perform amazing miracles. And we hope that we're able to cure this in the future. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone wants to say anything, you're more than welcome, or we're not.
I can talk.
Good, no, yeah, please.
I kind of spearheaded this initiative with West Virginia Kids Cancer Crusaders, which is a nonprofit out of Charleston. And they have reached out to most of the counties in the southern part of West Virginia and haven't really gone to the north. So I took it upon myself to reach out and to contact. So I'm just very excited because if you heard the statistics, less than four percent of the federal government fund goes to childhood cancer and for the research. Most of this is a very grassroots effort on the parents' parts and the doctors' parts. You know, we all know what pink stands for in October, but do you know what gold stands for in September? So that's why we are here, to try to shed light on that. We hope that next year, this is on your agenda as well and that we can rally some businesses and lots of support so that Morgantown goes gold, not for WVU, but for childhood cancer awareness and for these kids that are fighting for their lives. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like a picture with the proclamation?
Yes.
Yes, that's what, yes. And would they like to come up too?
Yes.
Oh, we'll do it down here. It's easier.
Yeah.
We'll go down here.
Easier.
We'll be all here. Come on back here. Okay. Yeah, one to the left. Okay, we have a little bit more.
Ready?
And if you're allowed, I have a mint. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on nine of Kansas, so this is a very. And if you didn't want to stay, we understand.
Yes.
I sent the picture. He enjoyed it. Sometimes a state can be very rewarding as being county commissioners, and this is one. Okay, we now have proclamation. We now have Mr. Andrew Gasmar Gasbridge, Director of Planning, update on status of proposed subdivision regulations. Come on down.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little broken up too. My brother died of leukemia at age three in the sixties. But thanks to awareness and efforts, leukemia is actually rather treatable to an extent that people can have an actual life when they're diagnosed with it. But it is, it's emotional, so give me a second here.
Sure, truly understand.
So, yes, the subdivision ordinance draft that I handed out in August to you all and to the Planning Commission and other people that have been on committees this, in this regards, they've had a chance to look at what has been improved from their suggestions. There have been a number of improvements for clarity. I believe that you have seen that really what is being regulated really hasn't changed. Most of the comments have been, we need to make sure this is clear, easier to use. We know what we need to do. So to that effect, you have there in front of you a sample of the guidelines and toolkit for explaining what the legalese version of draft ordinance, subdivision ordinance might entail, we hope to entail, and how we would interpret it, how you would do it, written in much more common, average-person English with examples and scenarios that you can't put in subdivision regulations. So to that end, that's been very warmly received. In front of you, I have also submitted a tentative outline of a timeline for what might be the best way forward to adopt if we so choose to do so. And in that context, I'd like to point out a couple of quick things. First of all, this is very preliminary, very draft-oriented. I wanna say that the comments that I've been getting back, once you finally start pushing people and say, there are deadlines approaching that actually got a lot of feedback, because everybody's busy. The comments have been very positive, well-meaning. I personally have not been approached by people trying to undermine anything. I think that the comments have been well-thought and well-regarded. And we are trying to bring that in. But as a result, they have flagged that there are still some bits that need to be clarified. In other words, so the language, they understand where it's trying to go, but they don't necessarily see that as immediately clear or free from all discussion, particularly the development community. So I encourage us on this timeline to have a roundtable with consultants and the lawyers that you have engaged as consultants for this project to kinda get around and make sure we finalize the language. I think that it's well worth it to do so because we are very close. People are liking what they see. They just say, I don't know that I would have seen that written this way. So we're very close to getting over, and dare I hope to conjecture, getting it supported. I mean, very much embraced by the development community because I think they're very close to embracing this. So with that change, and the reason why I'm talking about that with you all is that I suggest we move slightly back the timeline for adoption from what I had proposed roughly in August to say the second week of November of two thousand nineteen might be the target date for a final plan before the County Commission for Public Hearing and Commission vote. And then we would adjust accordingly such that instead of January one being, if it were adopted, the inaction date. And that would give us a little bit more time. Remember that after the adoption, we still have to get a county engineer on board. We have to get a subdivision review board, and it takes time to get those things in place. So there needs to be a little bit of delay, and so we've made those tweaks. I hope this meets your approval as a rough timeline. But particularly, I think in order to get us over the finish line, we need at least to try a concrete date. And I suggest, and bold, I put the second week of November two thousand nineteen, which if it's at this time slot, would be the thirteenth of November, as being a targeted date for a public hearing for the final draft. And that would hopefully rally the development community and the public to say, let's get it to a state. It's never perfect, as we know. There's always a typo here and something to improve. And as you can see also on the timeline, there will be a year later, a review to see how we did. So that's my ask for you today. Would you please consider?
Yes. Did anyone, would you like to discuss?
No, I appreciate you, and again, I appreciate all your efforts to outreach. Anybody that I've been in contact with that's asked me about it, I've directed them to you. I know you've met with multiple developers. Again, we're trying to get the information. And the last time we had a public hearing, everybody in the room, everybody said, we need something but. Well, this is, this is something, and we're trying to get people to actually pay attention and give us valid input, and let's come up with something that makes sense but also, you know, helps us develop in a more efficient way and more, with more clarity going forward. So appreciate all your effort in this. Andrew, you've been a breath of fresh air to this project, and I appreciate your willingness to meet with anybody we direct to you.
I think this is really something that is a good way of making sure we have included everyone's input. To that end, I'm going to the Home Builders Association on Thursday evening. So I know you're going as well. I think it's fitting that we present ourselves to be able to listen to individuals that may, you know, may want to come to us.
I also wanna compliment you. The word that, adjective that's used when people say they talk to you is you're very flexible. And this has been something that I think all three of us have been wanting. And I think that makes you more accessible by doing that. Only one thing I'd like to twinge, tweak a little bit. We might wanna consider on that second week of November, whenever, we have actually two public hearings. This is what we've done in the past, one during this time and one in the evening. Just so that way, we offer both. And I think that was the only suggestions that were always made. And I think that's the only thing, besides that, I like that it's, you know, you're going countywide. You're giving people opportunity, and that would be the only thing when we come up with that date. But we would have it too, so I wanna make sure the public knows we would have one during the day. And if that's okay with the other commissioners.
Certainly.
Yeah, okay. We thank you. This is great. We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you very much. One caveat just to keep in mind, we need thirty days for such a thing noted, or.
Noted and then, okay.
So when you come up with that date, remember thirty days for the state statute. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thirty days in the whole.
And the, that's for the.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. But we have, we post thirty days prior that we're gonna have a meeting regarding this. And then you have, you currently have the subdivision, the current draft is out on your website. And you're modifying it, so I'd encourage people, don't print off a.
Yes.
So, it would be difficult to have a public hearing that night because that would coincide with their...
If we want to do off-schedule, we can do it Thursday or...
Yeah.
So, we'll...
Okay. We'll work out something.
We'll figure out the date.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have a Wednesday and Thursday evening.
That's good.
That gives two different options.
Or the following week on Thanksgiving when everybody's off.
Right. That's what I was worried about.
Or what may be interesting, dare I say, since they've been integrally apart, I don't know if that's possible here, but it was in other places I've worked, where you have a joint meeting. I don't know if that's possible, but...
Well, they could be in the mix. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll discuss it.
Again, they can change their meeting.
Yeah, too.
However, they're on this schedule too.
That's true.
Yeah.
Or one after the other, or something like that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Ms. Collin Kuhn? We have no grants today. We have no grants. Correspondence.
Okay. I only have one item of correspondence today. We received a packet from the town of Star City. If you recall, several months ago, they approached us in a work session regarding modifications to their TIF project plan along Boyers Avenue. They have followed the recommendation of our bond counsel, Tom Amon, and have done the steps that they needed to do. We have a letter, so whether all, whether you want to go ahead and approve to move it and refer it to Tom for his review, or if you want a week to review it, and then we can do that next week, is up to you.
Move that we refer it to our bond counsel, Tom Amon, to review it and for completeness, and as you report back a recommendation.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good.
That's all correspondence.
Okay. Unfinished business?
None.
Okay. Move the new business, and we're going to remove item A at this time, and we will go to B. Consideration the formally accepted, the revised application for annexation by the town of Granville, and set a date and time for a public hearing, finally.
They submitted new meets and bounds, and those have been sent to the assessor's office for their determination.
Yes. So, let's just, do we have it?
In accordance with the statute, when we get an application at some point, if we accept the application, we have to do so in a public meeting. And then, that triggers the setting of a date for a public meeting. So, I move that we accept the application and set the date for a public meeting.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We've now done that, so now let's...
And I would direct that our administrator, rather than doing that now, would set a date and inform all parties.
Okay. And then, I can inform you of...
Yes.
And doing posting and...
Okay. That's fine. Okay. At least, we're going through the process. Okay. Is there any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay. Reports from any elected officials? I see anyone? Carrie? Kelly? No one. I know we're meeting later. Okay. Reports from county commissioners? Sean, I think you go first. It's done.
Okay. If I'm on the right week. It's been a fairly slow week, so I'm just going to really quickly. Last week, I had, after, since the last meeting, I had on Thursday, I had a red team meeting. I had a meeting with the, we actually had our extension building meeting on Thursday last week, and then I had a meeting with the Development Authority. My notes didn't update, so I was prepared for everything I've done in the past week. So, that's all I'll say about my schedule. I really appreciate the group that came in here for the cancer awareness. Sometimes when you see these proclamations, we do these regularly for all different types of things, but when you actually see the kids and bringing the kids in that are actually victims of cancer and seeing the families, it really, you know, there's not much more I can say today other than I'm happy that they came in and I'm proud of the, to live in Morgantown where we're building the new Children's Hospital and are the kind of the Mecca for helping these kids, and just kind of leave it at that.
Thank you.
I concur. Having been in dentistry for 40 years and contacted people who were in such situations, it's, it makes you very heartfelt to know what's going on in our community. We really have people who care, and I would hope that we do see gold for this next year. So, that's... I was gone for the great part of 10 days, visiting my son, so my report is also pretty short. I did attend an extension and 4-H Center meeting, followed by the interview with the IT tech that we had on Tuesday. I already mentioned I'll be attending the Home Builders Association meeting on Thursday. And Friday is the inspection meeting at the 4-H and Extension Center, followed by the Historical Society meeting. So, that's it.
Also, I had a meeting on Monday at the 4-H Extension Office with a possible summer program that they wanted us to at least be aware of. And also, I would be remiss that my son's birthday is today, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. And that is our meeting. Do I have a...
Oh, I would be remiss, because this Sunday is my anniversary, so I want to thank my wife, my wife for 19 wonderful years, and I'm looking forward to the next 19.
Happy birthday and happy anniversary, and I move to adjourn.
Second. We be gone. We don't sing birthday either.
No song. We are not breaking out.
No, we're not going to break traditional rules here.